Always too brief and I've been reading them that way for years.
Call to order the regular meeting of Lacy. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm always jumping the gun. I apologize. First, do I have a motion to close private session?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. And I apologize to the public, that took us a little bit longer than we anticipated. We had lots of business tonight. In regard to tonight's meeting, call to order the regular meeting of Lacy Township Board of Education, July 20th, 2015. Adequate notice of this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and The Beacon on January 7th, 2015, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filling a cop- or filing, I should say, a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Will you all join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and over to...
Sixty-six.
Thank you, sixty-six. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the agenda meeting held on June 15th, 2015?
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes and appropriate attachments for the regular meeting held on June 15th, 2015? The move was by Mrs. McAvoy, do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
No.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Mr. Stein, in regard to the motion, does it carry?
Three and one.
Three and one.
Yes, three and one, that carries.
In regard to, okay, thank you. Move that the board approves the minutes of the private session held on June 15th, 2015.
Move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy, Mrs. Downey, roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Um, yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. In regard to the two next motions, do I have a motion to table those motions? Does that, is that required, Mr. Stein?
Yes, yeah.
Do I have a motion to table the next two motions? Unfortunately, tonight, two of the members who were present at the meeting are not here tonight.
It is.
And we'll move that to the August meeting.
Yes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Thank you. Mrs. DeSenza, where am I going now?
Page eighty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills in total of $5,726,567.41? Do I have a motion?
Move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes, on all except the following, on page ten of Bills and Claims Report, item 260527, item 953013, item 953014, item 953035, and I'm going to have Stain on item 5875, page three, on July 1st, Bill and Claims Report, page three, Agenda, page eighty-two, and I have a list coming across now.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Thank you. Do I have a motion through the adoption of this resolution?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Thank you. At this time, Mr. Stein, do you have any further report?
Not at this moment, but I will have some things later in the meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Dr. Brower.
Thank you, President Terrell. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Hanchu and also Mr. Faulkner, who serves as our student assistance counselor. And they are here tonight to give us a brief presentation on the results of our our random drug testing program at the conclusion of our first full year. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Brower. Everyone can hear us all right in the back, yes? I love an audience, thank you. All right, we're going to give you a brief overview of our random drug and alcohol testing program that we've had. We're going into our third year. Of course, we had a one full year this past year with a lot of participation from our student body. So, we just want to share with you some of the facts of what we've gathered in our research, looking back at our program.
And can everybody see, or should I dim the light?
Are you okay?
Everybody see? Thank you.
Each year, we have approximately 1,100 students that are enrolled in a random drug and alcohol testing by the end of the school year. By the time spring sports come and the coaches need to get a list of students that are in and not in the program, it's a lot easier for us to run off the students that were not in the program because it's only a few hundred compared to the rest of the school. So, we do have a great amount of participation, and that's a credit to our families and to our students. What we do is each month, we test forty students, and it's almost bi-weekly, so it's twice a month. So, you could figure it's twenty each time we do a test. The tests are somewhat bi-weekly, although we're not, it is random, so it could happen every other week, it could happen twice in a row. It's random, and really, the company contacts us with their availability within a set schedule. It only takes a student approximately five to ten minutes to participate. They come down to the nurse's office and do the random sampling there, and then they go right back to class. So, on average, about five to ten minutes. Every once in a while, you get someone, it may take a little bit longer, but we really try not to impact the academic arena as much. So, five to ten minutes, we're doing quite well with it. Our vendor Sports Safe reports to us that nationally, they find from their customers, they have about a 2% of usage where we get positive results. New Jersey is fairly high, and actually, one of their highest with 4%. And what we did is we figured out what our percentages were through looking at first-time offenders, not repeat offenders, because sometimes you may get a student that is an offender second and third time, or even more so than that. But if you look at 2013, 14, we had five students out of 167 that had a positive test result. And I could share with you, our results do take over a panel, which you can see in the board minutes, which will be approved, and the set limits for those. But for us, right now, it's been marijuana, it's been the use. Now, can you say that's a good thing or a bad thing? It's not a good thing, of course, to have any drug use in our students. So, it has been marijuana, though, 100% of the way, so far, if you knock wood on that. With, this year, we had about 3%, we had 12 students, but out of the 400 student population that was tested randomly. I'd like to introduce to you, in one of our steps, is Mr. Faulkner, who's our student assistance coordinator. One of the steps that we take immediately, once a student's identified, is to provide them with in-school counseling and extra support. And as soon as I get a positive report, I have a quick meeting with Mr. Faulkner, and we go over the name of the student and set up a plan for that. So, Mr. Faulkner will address you now.
Thank you, Mr. Hanchu. Just a few preliminary statements about the random drug testing program here at Lacy High School. It was never meant to be a punitive program. It was more geared towards a goal of prevention, education, and down the road, if need be, treatment at outside facilities or treat or therapists. When Mr. Hanchu does identify a student who tested positive, he does refer them to me or my coworker, Mrs. Brown, for the first, the first level of counseling, which is four counseling sessions with the student assistance coordinator, which is my official title. Along with that, just to expand a little, they are out of their activity for 10 days, whether it be sports, clubs, curricular, extracurricular activities, or even a parking permit. So, in that first session, it's, I get to meet the student, if I don't know them already, from other activities, and we talk about what happened and why it happened, and what we're going to do about it, and what they can do about it to avoid any repercussions in the future. Fortunately, as you're going to see when Mr. Hanchu talks again, most, the majority of students, they just have that first offense, which is a great thing, as far as I'm concerned as a counselor, to see them doing well and realize they made maybe perhaps a mistake and a lack of judgment. During this year, we've only had three students that had a, have a second offense. And in the second offense, you'll see up there, the counseling sessions with the SAC, student assistance coordinator, is increased to eight sessions. And we do a little more intensive evaluations to see if more counseling is needed on the outside, whether it be a drug and alcohol program or a therapist. And this, fortunately, this year, we had one student who unfortunately kept experimenting with the substance, and that student wound up with his third offense. And he, or, excuse me, I will say it was a male, but we do have females that have had in the program. This student was quite a challenge for myself, he was assigned to me. And if you're familiar with the effects of marijuana and things like that, he met a lot of the symptomology. He just didn't care anymore about school, his grades dropped, although his attendance was outstanding, he had any attendance problems. He was in the program because of his parking permit, he lost a parking permit, mom, dad sold his car, he lost his job. Things were looking pretty bleak. However, about early April, mid-April, something clicked. He clicked with the outside therapist I arranged for him, and things got better. And we were so pleased to see that the grades went up, things were better at home, and he was on the graduation line in June. So, that was our success story. So, that was our third offense, fortunately. And back to Mr. Hanchu.
Let's just look at a quick summary. We really feel that our program is a success. Now, you could ask me, and I'll say, "Oh, it's a success." I'll paint a good picture on mainly anything. But you know how you find out? You ask the students. And by asking the students, they have reinforced that it has changed students' behavior, it's made them more aware of their accountability, and it seems to be working, and that, of course, is very crucial. Once again, we did talk about a 12th grade student, and I was thinking about this driving back into school today. When we first heard about the random drug and alcohol testing program, we looked at another school that was in Monmouth County, and it was brought to our attention that a lot of the students that do have three offenses, that's just about it. They get caught once, they get caught twice, by the time they get to the third, they drop out of school. That is not our goal, our goal is to keep them in. And this one student was a great example, came to myself and his principal, Ben, and said, "Hey, I'm dropping out, I lost my car, I'm getting in trouble for utilizing drugs, I really can't stop right now." And we said, "Hey, you don't need to drop out, you need help, let us help you." And we gave him, gave him a choice, say, "Hey, come see us Monday, we'll get you set up, give us a try, or if you really can't handle it, we'll have to honor that also. But give us a chance." Sure enough, that student came to school and graduated this year. So, it's something we took great pride in, and that student to make the commitment to let us help them out. And also, you have to realize, out of the seventeen positive tests we had, seventeen different students, fourteen students didn't require any extra follow-up besides the first round of counseling and that support. And that's really excellent, because we want to get those students to think twice and give them one more reason to say no to drugs. So, if you are a student that does have the first round offense, there's an eight out of 10 chance that you will not be back again because you did learn from our policy when it comes to the random drug and taking accountability for your own actions. So, in summary, we just want to give students one more reason to say no to drugs, and this policy, this procedure that is well thought out, has given us that tool. All right? Thank you very much, Dr. Brower, thank you for your time. Do you want us to field any questions at this time, or are we good?
No.
Okay. Very good. All right, thank you, to the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Faulkner and Mr. Hanchu, thank you very much. I know it's summer, but thank you for coming out and doing that presentation for us. I just want to make one comment in regard to it. I think it's a great success as a former assistant juvenile public defender. One of the biggest issues, and Mr. Faulkner can attest to this, is the dropout rate, right? And so, anytime that we can get a student to get treatment and to graduate is a huge success. Our program was designed by our staff and administration to make sure that there were supports in place so that education would not be taken away from these children. They would not be punished, but they'd get treatment, and it's worked, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And I do want to thank the high school administration, Mr. Hanchu, Mr. Faulkner, Mrs. Brown, I know he's not here, and the counselors, who have the right mindset for this, and that is for helping kids and getting there at the right time, right? So, thank you. At this time, I would just like to ask Dr. Faulkner briefly, for compliance purposes, report out on the harassment, intimidation, bullying report for period two, which is from January 1st, 2015, to June 30th, 2015.
Thank you, Dr. Brower. Yes, school districts are required to do two reporting periods. I'm going to be reporting, as Dr. Brower said, from January 1st to June 30th, with a comparison to the same time period last year, and I'm going to be doing it by school. So, for Cedar Creek, there were zero investigations, zero confirmed, that is the same as last year. For Forkett River, zero investigations, zero confirmed, that is also the same as last year. Lenoka Harbor, zero investigations, zero confirmed, also the same as last year. For the Mill Pond School, there were two investigations, and two of those were confirmed, and that is identical to last year, it was also two and two. For the middle school, there was one investigation, one was confirmed, that is a decrease of two for the investigations, last year it was three. And for confirmed, that is a decrease of two as well. This time last year, three cases were confirmed. And finally, for the high school, there were 10 investigations for this time period as compared to last year, there were 12, that's a decrease of two. And of those, three were confirmed, and that is a decrease of four because seven were confirmed this time last year. So, in summary, for this past time period, 13 total investigations, decrease of four from last year. And for confirmed, there were a total of six, which is a decrease of six. And that's all I have to report. Thank you, Dr. Brower.
Thank you, Dr. Brower. Mrs. Terrell, that concludes my section of the report. And then, as always, our reports are attached for your information.
Thank you. Well, I have something a little bit more exciting to do than that last report. Even though it's part by law. And actually, can everybody hear me? Okay. I would love for a fine young student to come down who has been the recipient, or is the recipient, of the John I. Scholarship. Kip Hawker, if you can please join me, and then I'll share something. Now, I've known Kip, so he was a little Cub Scout, so this is a great honor for me. And he's also an Eagle Scout, if I can just say that. So, let me read to you about the scholarship. And the John I. Scholarship, are you aware of what that is?
I don't know.
Yes, most Lacy graduates don't, but it actually goes to our velatory, which is Kip Hawker's here. It's in the amount of $400. At the time of John I.'s death, he was domiciled and had his residence in Lacy, on Lacy Road. He died on March 8th, 1976, leaving a will dated November 20th, 1963, which equates onto the Lacy Township Board of Education $10,000. He requested that a scholarship award be established so that an award might be annually made with the proceeds from the $10 million to students who graduate from the eighth grade from the public school in Lacy Township with the highest scholarship. That's how old this is, because it was talked about eighth grade. Well, it also says that scholastic honors, which means that the student has to have the highest GPA average of all students attending the whole academic year. In the event that a public high school is established in Lacy Township, then in that event, he directed that such scholarship award shall be changed and made to the student graduating from the high school with the largest or the highest scholastic honors. So, that's how old this scholarship is, but you have lots of fine people before you who've received this since 1967, and I'm proud to say you're the next recipient. Congratulations. If they write a book, or two. Oh, and his parents, be... Please stand. Thank you, and maybe he can reimburse you the gas money he's been borrowing.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And thank you for coming out on a summer night. I know it's the last place you want to be, but we appreciate you sharing the night with us. And you have no other matters? I do not.
I could. So, Mrs. Terrell just reminded me that as we're preparing for the next part of the agenda, we had an outstanding end of our school year. Mr. Hanchu? Fine job on that weather call, Mr. Hanchu. It was a fine job.
You did. And the graduation was spectacular, and we're so proud of our high school graduates and also our eighth grade students who have been promoted to the high school that you're about to receive. There were so many graduations at our preschool level and lots of celebrations. One of the themes that we tried to follow through at the end of the year was to have fun while learning, and we promoted that at the end of the year. And so, very, very happy with our students and our staff, and we certainly wish all of them a happy summer, as we are very, very busy preparing for your arrival yet again in September.
Thank you. And that's... Yes, as I say, that is all the presentations we have for tonight, so if anybody would like to get up and exit, we will not take offense to that. So, I'll give anybody a minute if they would like to depart. And the next part of our agenda is comment from the public. And if you please could raise your hand, and when called upon, just go to the podium and state your name and address. Anybody would like to speak from the community? Come on down.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Peter DePrado, 111 Fox Hollow Drive in Lenoka Harbor. I just have a few public comments to make respectfully. Firstly, I just want to bring to everyone's attention the fact that a board member, Mrs. Regina DeSenza, has not been able to get an Oprah request since June 1st, which I have a copy of right here, which was also headlined in the Lacy Reporter a couple, about a week ago. There is no excuse for that, and the behavior by school board attorney and business administrator is very questionable. If in this request, the business administrator says that no correspondence exists, then how can the attorney justify billing the school board for it? And that is in reference to, which is in this Oprah request. One of the first questions, Mr. DeSenza was, legal mem-, she was asking for legal memos and correspondence, emails to the Decarifarm, which was part of that solar panel fiasco. And it was also noted on legal bills of Mr. Stein on November 18th, 2013, and December, December, let me get it right.
And I'm sorry...
December 18th, 2013.
Oh, I just want to interject for a second. I'm sorry, what are you reading from?
I'm reading from Regina DeSenza, a copy of Regina DeSenza's Oprah request that was made to the school.
Oh, okay, and how did you get that?
I just received it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. DeSenza.
It's published on the internet.
Oh, and how did, how was it published on the internet? Is that something you provided?
I provided it to the Lacy Reporter.
Oh, to the Lacy Reporter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's a...
I was just confused by all this.
In the Lacy Reporter, there's a copy of it.
Yeah, I don't read that blog, so I was confused on how that actually occurred.
Okay, well, that's how I got it.
Okay.
Okay. Additionally, why is a contracted professional receiving health benefits through the school system, talking about Mr. Stein?
You know, we've actually talked about that numerous times, and actually, Mrs. DeSenza has asked me numerous times, and it's not true, he is not being...
He's not getting it?
He's not.
Okay.
Saying that, I think I, as president, have probably said that at least two or three times at public meetings.
Okay, if he's no longer getting it, then why is it still in his contract?
It's not in the current contract. If it was in previous contracts, it was an oversight, because that has not occurred.
Okay.
But it's not in the current contract that we're developing, and in that contract, Mrs. McAvoy, Mrs. DeSenza, Mr. Giordano, and Mr. Bedwell and I have been very active in developing that contract.
Okay, because the reason why I'm asking is...
And Mrs. DeSenza can tell you, it's not in the current contract that we're developing.
It was eliminated.
Pardon me?
It was eliminated, it's been...
Yeah, it's not in the current contract.
Okay. Because the one, the copies that I had, had it in there, so I didn't know that.
Okay.
And my last, oh, I have two more public comments. Thirdly, on this Amanda incident.
On the what?
This alleged Amanda incident, which was...
I do not know what you're talking about.
It's where...
I'm sorry, Mrs. DeSenza, did you have a comment?
No, I don't know what he's talking about.
The Amanda incident, which I'm talking about, is with the King and Queen, the prom, and the disparaging comments that were made against handicapped students, which required a public statement from the chief of police. But still, silence and denial, nobody's had, coming out with anything from the school system. And I'm wondering, why, why is this? Why hasn't anything been done? And lastly...
Well, my understanding is that there's been an investigation that we've been working with the police department, and we're waiting to hear from the police department.
Okay. That's fine.
They're doing an investigation that we would not interfere with.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, from the last, from the last meeting, I had told Mr. Schopstein, I told him that I had received a three-pager from the Division of, New Jersey Division of Pensions. And I don't want to comment on it, I want to give every member, I'm doing this out here right now because I want to be transparent as possible. So, and to give all the board members time to read this, I want to hand this to every member, and I will come back at the next meeting, which is August 17th, which I will have an additional statement from the Division of Pensions, because the lady's been on vacation for the last two weeks, and she's going to fax me next week a statement on this, a full expla-, explanation, and how I have said that he is on, from the Lacy District. And they have already confirmed to me that it is true, and they're going to have a statement made to me and faxed to me next week, and I will bring it to the next meeting. And I don't want to comment on anything else with this because it wouldn't be fair to any of you here, but I want to just start this off and be as transparent as possible. And with that, I'm closing and saying, "Thank you very much for listening to me."
Thank you.
I'm not doing this for any reason but to keep the residents of Lacy Township informed on everything that's going on. And I'm, and that's all I'm doing, so. With that, have a great evening, and I'm going to pass this to everybody.
Thank you.
Just, you should probably just give it to the board secretary.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
It's Bill Moss, Biscayne Drive, Fort River Beach. I came up here back in about 2012 and acknowledged the students that we had for Hurricane Sandy, and what they did for this township, and how much they did for this township. And then, this, I'm not going to say the same words, but the King and Queen of the prom this year, many of those students, or some of those students from Hurricane Sandy. And for the public to know, they went and took the handicapped seniors of our class and made them the King and Queen of the prom. I congratulate the class of 2015 for what they did, all of them, for doing that and showing the integrity that was given to them and learned, taught in our schools by Mr. Hantshu and his staff. That's all I want to say was, I'm proud of the 2015 graduating class of Lacy Township for what they have done. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moss, I don't know if you were there, but I got to tell you, they were all gentlemen and young lady at that graduation. It was one of the finest graduations I've attended, so yes, give them a round of applause.
I'm Heather Scanlon. I'm here on behalf of the Municipal Alliance, and I just want to thank the board for instituting this random drug policy. You know, we realize that this is a big problem in our community, as in other communities, and this in, by no means is a solution to the drug problem in our town. However, we do feel it's a first step, it's part of a lot of things that we can do to try to prevent our kids from going down that road, which they cannot come back from. So we just want to say thank you, this is a good tool, and hopefully, some young students have been provided an intervention which can change possibly the path that they take. So we just want to thank the board very much for instituting the policy.
Thank you, and thank you for your continued support, especially at Red Night Out. Anyone else like to speak tonight? Going once, going twice, seeing no other hands, I'm closing the floor to public comment. We have board committee reports.
Mrs. Downing, do you mind if I do start you off? Are you ready? Okay, the curriculum committee meeting was held on Monday, June 29th, at four o'clock, and in attendance were myself, Sean Giordano, Maureen Terrell, Vanessa Clark, Dr. Clark and Dr. Brower. We talked about many things. One was the K-6 literacy adoption. The committee received an update about the Pearson Ready Gen program that will be implemented free of charge in grades three and four during this upcoming school year. Dr. Clark previously shared information about this program and reported that plans are underway for ordering materials and planning for the summer professional development that will take place during the weeks of August 17th and August 24th. We discussed Envision Math 2.0 realized platform. This will be, have an implementation in grades K-1 and 2. The committee received an update about the program and was also provided an opportunity to view samples of student consumables. This information was previously shared with the committee. Dr. Clark also shared information about the Envision Math app called Bounce Pages and demonstrated to us how the app will benefit students and parents at home. The committee also discussed cost savings associated with the transition to this new platform, and what professional development will look like for teachers as they transition to the 2.0 platform. We talked about the application for a waiver with Achieve New Jersey. Dr. Clark shared information about the waiver application that the district will submit to the county office for approval. The waiver application requests approval for all tenure teachers having achieved either highly effective or effective evaluation status for the 2014-15 school year, to be observed using too long, which is a 40-minute observation, for the 2015-16 school year. The current guidelines require three short, 20 minutes each. This is the second year that the Lacy Township School District will submit the application for waiver. The same waiver is approved for the 2014-15 school year. And I believe it's on our agenda for approval, Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Dr. Brower?
Yes, it is. We also discussed a guidance curriculum. Dr. Clark shared a draft copy of the K-12 guidance curriculum. High school counselor, Peg Grant, and Lenoka Harbor counselor, Elise Winkle, have been working on this document for the past several months. Dr. Clark reminded the committee that completion of this plan is a Q-SAC requirement. It is expected that the document will be complete by August so that we can approve it at the August board meeting. We also discussed, and reviewed a copy of the basic and preschool IDEA grant application that is submitted annually by the Director of Special Services, Dr. Maske. The committee reviewed the rationale and function of the grant and identified the students who benefit. We talked also about the one-to-one technology and the progress that is being, going on during the summer. They provided the committee with an update. We talked about the student handbook, it's in a draft form right now. We talked about how parent workspace, did I correct that? Did I correct it? The one-to-one student focus group, which is, was scheduled to take place July 9th. One-to-one parent focus group meeting will be announced, and professional development, Summer PD Academy, Envisionary Teachers, which will take about, there will be about 20 teachers involved with that. The committee also had the opportunity to see the device that each student will receive at the start of the school year. Dr. Clark shared that the teacher laptop will be available to view at the next curriculum meeting, which is Monday night, the 27th. We talked about professional development, which, as we all know, is so important for the success of any curriculum. The committee discussed which, the Summer PD Academy, which is currently underway, Dr. Clark shared that 40 workshops are being presented to Lacy Township School District teachers and administrators, for a total of 94 sessions. 29 workshops are presented by Lacy Township's School District teachers, and 11 by the administrators. Dr. Clark also shared that administrators and a select group of teachers will participate in Google Educator Certification Boot Camp on August 5th and 6th. Jason England will facilitate the boot camp, which is designed to prepare participants for the rigorous exams that are required by Google for certification. And last but not least, excuse me, Dr. Clark discussed proposed changes to the before-and-after care childcare, after-school childcare program fee structure. And we're going to discuss that more at our next curriculum meeting. And that's, that's it. So thank you for your attention. Excuse me.
Thank you. Dr. Brower, did you have another?
I did. I just, yes, Mrs. Downing, thank you for mentioning Mr. Maske's name, because I should have mentioned your name.
I just promoted up to doctor.
Well, he's right, he's all ABD, so it's just, but Mr. Maske is also responsible for our nursing services program and students with special needs. He came out on this night to be here to support the random drug testing program, and I do want to thank all the members of the Municipal Alliance. Our partnership continues to get stronger each year, and I don't think we could do any of our work without you and your support. So thank you for being here on this summer evening, on a very important night during this time when we're talking about some results that help kids. So thank you.
So thank you, Mrs. Terrell, I wanted to finish that. Thank you. And we also have a policy committee report. Mrs. McAvoy, can you get through that?
We're going to try. Okay, the policy members met on July 13th, present were board members Terrell, McAvoy, Bidwell, Dr. Brower. At the meeting, we welcomed Phil Nacastro from Strauss S.M.A. We discussed the possibilities of expanding the random drug testing policy to the middle school. We will continue to discuss this and take in consideration legislative and code considerations. Mr. King and Mr. Hantshu will be invited to the next meeting to continue the discussions. Tonight, we discussed random drug testing, and we had that presentation already. We reviewed the contracts for SportSafe and the standard panel, which we will be approving tonight. We discussed, and we will be taking action, on eight policies and regulations tonight. 21 job descriptions we're presenting, and they will be up for approval tonight. We reviewed updated high school graduation information, and we discussed policies 0174 and 9700. We discussed how administrative authorizations are made for legal services, as well as the logging of calls and legal work requests. Mrs. McAvoy suggested that the committee review school visitor policy, and Dr. Brower will present language at the next policy meeting. And the committee was seeking input, will can seek, I can't talk, the committee will seek input from the entire board members for recommendation for BIOL 0152, and we adjourn the meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all the committee reports we have at this time, so now it is board comment time. Mrs. DeCenza, would you like to begin?
Yes, I see that policy 0174 was discussed in my absence, and I just happened to bring it with me tonight, and I would like to read it over. In accordance with NJAC 6A:23A-540, the Board of Education adopts this policy and its strategies to ensure the use of legal services by employees and the Board of Education members, and the tracking of the use of legal services. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools, the superintendent of schools designating, the school business administrator and board secretary, and the board president as the designated contact persons to request services or advice from contracted legal counsel. Says here, "The Board of Education shall be responsible to review all legal bills and confer with designated contact persons in reviewing such legal bills." In accordance with the provisions of NJAC 6A:23A-5.2, lowercase a2, the board designates the administrative staff member to review all legal bills and designates contact persons to ensure the prudent use of legal services. School districts with legal costs that exceed 130% of the statewide average per pupil amount should establish the procedures outlined in 1, 2, 3, and 4 below, and if not established, provide such evidence, provide evidence such procedures would not result in a reduction of costs. The designated, number one, the designated contact person or persons shall ensure that contracted legal counsel is not contacted unnecessarily for management decisions or readily available information contained in district materials, such as board policies, administrative regulations, or guidance available through professional source materials. Number two, all requests for legal advice shall be made to the designated contact person or persons in writing, and shall be maintained on file in the district offices. Designated contact person shall determine whether their request warrants legal advice or if the legal advice is necessary. The designated, number three, the designated contact person shall maintain a log of all legal counsel contacts, including the name of the legal counsel contacted, date of the contact, issue discussed, and length of contact. Number four, all written requests for legal advice and logs of legal counsel contacts shall be forwarded to the administrator responsible for maintaining district files of requests for legal advice and logs of legal counsel contacts. Superintendent, school business administrator, who shall be responsible to review all legal bills and compare all legal bills to the contact logs, and to investigate and resolve any variances. Any professional services contract for legal services shall prohibit advance payments. Services to be provided shall be described in detail in the contract and invoices for payment, shall itemize the services provided for the billing period. Payment to legal counsel shall only be for services actually provided. School districts and vocational school districts are prohibited from contracting with legal counsel or using in-house legal counsel to pursue any affirmative claim or cause of action on behalf of district administrators and/or any individual board members or pursuing any claim or cause of action for which the damages to be awarded would benefit an individual rather than the school district as a whole. The Board of Education will annually establish prior to budget preparation, a maximum dollar limit for each type of professional services, including legal services. In the event it becomes necessary to exceed the established maximum dollar limit for the professional service, the superintendent of schools shall recommend to the Board of Education an increase in the maximum dollar amount. Any increase in the maximum dollar amount shall require formal board action. Contracts for legal services will be issued by the board in a deliberative and efficient manner that ensures the district receives the highest quality services at a fair and competitive price or through a shared service arrangement. This may include, but is not limited to, issuance of such contracts through a request for proposals, RFP, based on cost and other specified factors or other comparable processes. Contracts for legal services shall be limited to non-recurring or specialized work for which the district does not possess adequate in-house resources or in-house expertise to conduct. And that has been in place since October 18th, 2010, was the first reading, and the second reading adopted it on November 15th, 2010. And I have found that the legal bills are a vendor bill like any other, and if a memo is written, I should be able to access it, and I have had great difficulty accessing memos, letters, correspondence that has appeared on the legal bills. And I just wanted to read that policy, because it's already in place, and I think we need to get a handle on our legal services, and just be able to see what's actually on the bill instead of just reading a bill. Thank you, Mrs. Terrell.
Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy?
Are you skipping for a minute? I'm...
Yes, she's skipping for a minute, she's trying to hold the cough drop. And I just want to thank Mrs. McAvoy for coming out tonight. We would have had to cancel the board meeting without her, she's not feeling well, so give Mrs. McAvoy a round of applause for showing up. We appreciate it.
Okay, I just, I would like to thank Mr. Hantshu and Mr. Faulkner for presenting tonight, and thank Mrs. Browning also for her participation in that. It's great to see that it is working, our students are aware that this will be done, and I think as Heather said before, it's a good, it's not the whole source of, to get everything done, but it is a start, and I want to congratulate you on all the efforts the school district put into it. I want to also congratulate Kip Hopper for receiving another award of many. He's just such a fine representative of Lacy Township High School. He's a nice young man, I sat with him at the Ocean County Superintendent's Roundtable Breakfast. He was honored, and it was such a pleasure to talk to him and to get to know him. Also like to congratulate all our graduates, I thought, this year, and congratulations to you, Mr. Hantshu and Mr. King, for a wonderful graduation. I'm glad we, thank you, Dr. Brower, for making that decision together to...
Good decision, Mr. Andrew.
And we had it on a nice sunny night, that was a good move, and it was...
And you did that all with your, without your weather radar, right? We had no power.
Yeah, so it was a wonderful night. I was glad I was able to attend both, and I just want to congratulate all our seniors, wish them the best of luck in whatever path they take, and good luck to all the eighth graders moving into the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy?
Okay, I just have a quick report. We have a spotlight on graduates, it's my favorite thing to do. Two former students, Brian Shantz graduated, he's presently working in the marketing department at Jay Kipper in Lakewood, and he reported that he loves his job. And Megan Shantz, his sister, she's going to graduate in May from Boston University with a major in ESL and a minor in linguistics. She will stay in Boston and begin her career there, and her mother reported that the two children had a wonderful experience here at Lacy Schools, and she attributes their success to the high school and all their years here at Lacy. And just thank everyone for the random drug testing, I think it's wonderful that we're being so proactive, and we're doing all we can to help our students, and I definitely and we're doing all we can to help our students and I definitely think it's successful and it's working. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank the board for their support this year, last year, and the year before. It's really been almost a three-year more project with the random drug testing. So it's not just today's board, but actually most of the work happened last year and the year before. And also just so the public understand, last year, not this current board, but last year when other board members were on along with Sean Giordano and Mrs. McAvoy, we were able to increase the funding for testing so that we were, we decided, we rolled out the prod, you know, the program for random drug testing and it was successful. We were able to accomplish it without upsetting the school day for our students. And so we decided to put more money into that program so we would have the opportunity to capture other young students at an earlier stage in drug use and hopefully provide positive services for them so they could retain in school and be successful. So I want to thank the board from last year for increasing the funding for that program. In regard to the policy that Mrs. DeSensa was reading, we are in compliance with that. I know that Mrs. DeSensa's talked about things that she wanted from two thousand eight, two thousand thirteen, so on. Just so people don't have the misconception, she's not asking about anything the board's currently working on. I know when she came to the board, there are certain things she wanted to, I guess, investigate on her own, have nothing to do with the current board is working on. So she continues to take that tack and continues to file Oprah requests for documents from, I think going back a little way to two thousand six. So we'll continue to work with her and try to provide her what we can, but I don't want the public to be confused. It has nothing to do with the current board activity. Or our ability, well, that's the one thing that you've made numerous Oprah requests.
I never asked for anything from two thousand six.
I apologize. I did not interrupt your comment.
I'm sorry, but I didn't ask for anything from two thousand six.
I think it was two thousand eight in regard to a bond, something in regard to a bond.
I wanted to read your bond documents.
Mrs. DeSensa, stop interrupting. I will bring, I keep all of them and I will bring them to the next board meeting so the whole public can see how much time our staff has to spend catering to Mrs. DeSensa, which takes time and energy away from all of our students. And it takes our administrators' time and energy away from making sure that our students are succeeding educational success. And I apologize. I just felt the need for us to actually provide the truth to the public. I think it's important that they hear all sides. Yes. And in regard to what we're trying to do, and I don't want any student or any staff member to feel that the board feels the way that Mrs. DeSensa does. We think you're doing an excellent job. We are there for you. We will fight for you each step of the way. Do we need improvement? Yes, we always need improvement, but we will do it in a kind way, in a supportive way, in a productive way. There's two ways to get things done. One way that helps the district move forward and another way that continues to shed, shed a negative light on our district that does not serve any of our students or our staff in any way, shape, or form. So I'd like the public to know that the majority of the board thinks you're doing a wonderful job and we are here for our students and it's student-first and not personal agendas. The graduation was tremendous. Our student speeches were impressive. That's what our future is in our town and it's a very bright future. As Mr. Moss said, the class of two thousand fifteen was exceptional. They gave back to their community regularly and they showed it by how they behaved at the graduation. Mr. King's eighth grade class was also another impressive class. We have great things ahead of us. Don't let anybody let you think differently. It's just not true. We have one of our graduates, Gavin, who's up behind the camera, and a fine graduate. I got to hand him lots of awards this year. So another successful Lacey graduate. And he is going to Stockton College, so we congratulate him on that. And that's all my comments. I hope you have a safe summer and we will see you back in August. And Mr. Stein did have
Yeah, free things, free things at this point. First is, there apparently is something going on tonight at the meeting having to do with some type of filming or something going on with a camera mechanism. And the board was not informed in advance that that was going to occur. So the board could not implement its policy on that and require seven days' notice if it felt it was necessary. I want to make it clear on behalf of the board that the fact that that did not happen, that the board did not require seven days' advance notice is not a waiver of the board's rights. There is case law on this subject. There's board policy on this subject. And the board will review the matter and make a determination as to whether or not the activities of the person who's doing the filming looks overly obtrusive, not only on the rights of the board, but on the rights of members of the public, since there has been, I noticed, a number of movements throughout the audience area tonight. So that's something that may be reviewed and I just want to make it clear to the operator of the equipment that the board's not waiving any rights. Secondly, with reference to the activity of a board member with reference to the Open Public Records Act and the apparent use of a member of the public to raise the issue before the board. The, when, when anybody makes an application under the Open Public Records Act, they're called a requestor. They're no longer called a member of the community. They're no longer called a staff member. They're no longer called a board member. They're a requestor. And a requestor is obligated to comply with all the requirements of the Open Public Readings Act, Open Public Records Act. So that means that, for example, a requestor can't come in and submit a request to Mr. Savage as the Business Administrator Board Secretary that is so overly broad that on the face of the document, the face of the request itself, it's not apparent what's being asked for. In reviewing the request that was made in, in a number of cases, but this one in particular that the gentleman referred to, the language could easily be considered to be overly broad when it asks for all legal memos, emails, letters, correspondence of any kind from Mr. Stein to the board president, superintendent, assistant superintendent, or business administrator, or finance committee et al., meaning whoever else, for the legal bill entry of November twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen regarding the CARA, if anything exists. That's what the request was. That is very overbroad. And what's interesting about the, the request is that the request is made to the business administrator with the, with the subject, this is the requestor using this language now, request for vintage confidential legal records. Vintage confidential legal records. So it's an acknowledgement by the requestors, number one, that this is not current material. This is vintage material. And secondly, and perhaps even more importantly, that it's confidential legal records. When a requestor makes an application to the, under the Open Public Records Act, that requestor is subject to all of the exceptions to what is considered to be a government record of any requestor. And it doesn't make any difference whether that requestor is a member of the public, a member of the staff, a board member, another public entity. Doesn't make any difference. So there are very valid reasons why Mr. Savage acted the way he did in response to those requests. A number of the requests, there simply were no documents. They did not exist. There is no requirement on the part of the business administrator or anybody else who has to get involved in the process to do any research. In other words, the documents are to be identifiable, readily identifiable, so that you can simply go and get the document. You don't have to research hundreds and hundreds or perhaps thousands of records. It's identifiable. These requests are not so identifiable. So I think that, just to put that in, in context, the other comment that, one of the other comments that was made by the gentleman talked about the, the solar fiasco. And people can repeat certain language over and over again and it gets to be to the point that some people actually say, well, that must be the case. Well, the solar project to date has made the district millions of dollars. Those millions of dollars of money in revenue that the solar project has made has reduced the tax rate by approximately twenty cents. So what does that mean, reduce the tax rate by twenty cents? It means that if you have a house that's assessed at three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that each and every year, there is a reduction in your tax bill based upon the revenue that was generated by the solar project. It means that each and every year, the solar project is saving each and every taxpayer hundreds of dollars. Not just one year, every year. Every year, there is a reduction in the tax rate of about twenty cents. The other thing I wanted to discuss, because I think it's a matter of importance and it goes directly to the functions of this Board of Education, the impact it has on this school district and the chief school administrator, sometimes known as superintendent. There was an article that was published on July thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, this past week, in a publication known as the Lacey Reporter.
I'm sorry, is that a publication or a blog?
Well, I'm going to get to that. I know there are people who think of it as a blog. Personally, I don't think of it as a blog. I will take it at face value what the publication, what the publisher of the Lacey Reporter says it is. And he, he says in his own document, in his, "The Rules of the Road for Commenting on the Lacey Reporter", the comment policy of the Lacey Reporter, in that document, he says, quote, "We're writing the future of journalism together." We're not writing the future of blogs. He says, "We're writing the future of journalism together." He says he's holding himself out to the standard of a journalist. He also says, well, let me not get ahead of myself. In his article, there are a number of inaccuracies and they're really bad blatant inaccuracies. The first one's not so terrible. The first one talks about the evaluation of the superintendent and makes reference to three paragraphs that the author says comes from the board policy one-two-four-zero. It doesn't come from policy one-two-four-zero. It comes from regulation one-two-four-zero. Maybe not a big deal, but it begins to give you an idea of the kind of checking that's being done and the kind of analysis that's being done when somebody is writing an article as a journalist. So that's the first thing. Then we go into something that's a bit more meaty about this. It goes on to say, referring to the superintendent, "Charges were dropped, but a recent inquiry to the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office revealed that, quote, 'No letter of exoneration exists for Brower.' If she wasn't exonerated, she likely was able to get charges dropped by playing a role in convicting her former boss." And then it goes on to talk about this person, James Hable. First thing is, in law, there is no such thing as a letter of exoneration. It is a document that does not exist. At least it does not exist in New Jersey. So that if you write to a police agency or you write to a prosecutor's office or you write to the state attorney general's office about a particular person and you ask them to give you a letter of exoneration, the answer that's going to come back to you is, the document does not exist. And the reason the document doesn't exist is because there is no concept or is no paper that talks in those terms that is known as a letter of exoneration. But it gets worse. Actually, what happened is the indictment against the superintendent was dismissed by the court. It was dismissed by the court on the motion of the, the Monmouth County Prosecutor. Now, aside from the stuff I do here and a lot of other things that I've done in the past, I was a county prosecutor. It's pretty extraordinary when a prosecutor's office requests a judge to dismiss an indictment that's been returned by a grand jury. That's pretty extraordinary. It's not a letter of exoneration, but it's an application to dismiss the indictment. And why is it an indictment? Why are they asking the indictment to be dismissed? What is the court going to look at when that application is made? As a lawyer, as, as a prosecutor who went through this process, what is the judge going to be asking? The judge is going to be asking, "Mr. Prosecutor, are you making this motion to dismiss this indictment because you can't prove what's being alleged in the indictment?" And the answer has to be yes. Judge, I cannot prove what's in the indictment. And therefore, it is my obligation as a prosecutor to request that the indictment be dismissed. And in this case, it was dismissed. And let me assure you, that is an extraordinary event. Extraordinary. It then goes on, the article then goes on to say that notably Brower did not testify at the Hable hearing amid speculation that she would, most likely aiding investigators behind the scenes. It also had said, "If she wasn't exonerated, she likely was able to get charges dropped by playing a role in convicting her former boss." Let me tell you something. The last thing in the world a prosecutor needs is somebody to say, "I'll give you information, but I won't testify." That's virtually worthless. There's got to be a person who's going to stand up and raise that right hand before the court and before that jury and say, "I solemnly swear to say the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth." Without that, the prosecutor has nothing. So for someone to indiscriminately, for a journalist to indiscriminately allege that because there was this exoneration or whatever, there was no exoneration in the eyes of this journalist, that therefore there must have been an agreement by the superintendent to give information to damage this other person. That leap, there is absolutely no evidence whatsoever to support that claim. None. It is baseless.
And let me just, does he cite anything?
There is nothing cited for that.
There's nobody quoted. It's just all speculation.
Nothing cited for that whatsoever. It is
Fiction.
It's a fiction. It is absolutely a fiction. And then goes on and, and, and says, "Notably Brower did not testify at the Hable trial amid speculation that she would, most likely aiding investigators behind the scenes." Well, as I pointed out, if you won't raise your right hand and swear before that jury and that judge that you're telling the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth and you've got something to say, you're worthless. And the other thing is, and I'll just ask Dr. Brower this question. Did you receive a subpoena from the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office to testify?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so we're dealing with a civilian witness. Standard operating procedure for a prosecutor's office when dealing with a civilian witness is to issue subpoenas. So if you don't get a subpoena, you're not going to be testifying. And long before they issue a subpoena, it's because they know that you're going to get there and raise that right hand and swear before almighty God that you're going to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And if you didn't get that subpoena, it's because you don't have anything to tell them. In my view, as a lawyer who's been practicing for a long time, that article was a disgrace. If it was going to get a grade, it would get an F. And what should be done is there should be a written apology to the superintendent and actually to the entire board because of course the board quite stir. And the article should be taken down immediately. And the article should be taken down immediately. So I thank you for listening to me, and I thank you for the
Thank you. And I have a couple of questions. Because credentialed reporters, there is a way, if they have the information wrong, people have been misquoted, they've not checked their facts, they actually, there's a way to grieve that. There is, if you don't get anywhere with a reporter, you can go to the board, the editorial board, or to the editor. Is there any editor on this website or any editorial board on this website?
Nothing's apparent to that effect.
And I searched it too. I don't, it says that it's all opinion unless otherwise stated, so it must be the opinion of Gavin who's sitting up there. And I just ask Gavin that you check facts, please, because people are reading your information, and it's important that you, since you're the sole, you're the sole person writing this. There's no editorial board, so there's nobody for me to call and say, oh, like the Asbury Park Press. I could call if they had their information wrong, and they would print a correction. I'm asking you to print a correction. If you actually speak to anybody who has any legal background, they will show you the errors in your article. It's apparent to me that it was all fabricated because there's nobody quoted. So, and just to state, Gavin does have a camera here tonight, I'm not sure why, we do tape record all of our board meetings. They are unedited, they're put up on the website for anybody all over the United States. I know people, when they're in Florida, who are town residents, they watch our board meetings. Not all boards do that, but we do that so that you hear each and every word. I caution, whatever you see on this blog, because it's edited by Gavin. So, and Gavin, I am asking you to print a correction. If you need any of the facts, we can provide those to you. Thank you. No other comments at this time. I'm asking for a motion, new business, A through S.
What page?
It is page 86.
Move.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
I have a question on the student insurance, item I.
Yes.
What is excess student insurance?
That's over and above what the family's coverage. If there's any deductibles or anything over and above
You mean for medical?
If they get hurt on a
They get hurt.
Okay. I wasn't sure what that meant.
Accident.
All right. So, yes, but I have some no's on item A, and no on item O, the B-0134, to abolish the board's self-evaluation. Absolutely not. And no on item P, the job description revisions.
So on O, it was just one of those?
O, just B-0134, the first one. To abolish the board's self-evaluation.
And you, you're voting no against the revised job descriptions
Yes.
That the public's been asking for.
I found the qualifications on several items are not, not specific enough and insufficient, and I'm not going to go over all
And you're an administrator? Okay. Okay.
Well, I wasn't going to pick and choose.
Right, just, just, no, just to clarify, we do, they all come from school boards. We're a member of the school board, New Jersey School Board Association, and that's where we are receiving those job descriptions from. So we can share, we can share your concerns with New Jersey School Board Association.
That's all. I was wondering where they came from too, but I knew they were professionally written, but I would have put additional information on several of them. So rather than pick and choose, I'm saying no to item P completely.
Mrs. McAvoy.
I'm sorry, we're A through
A through S.
A through S.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
In regard, and now we're on page 91, professional days and workshops. Item A, thank you. All second. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
I believe this section is for yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
I'm, A to what?
Page 91.
91.
Just A.
Oh, just A, yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Now we're on page 92, and it's certified personnel, A through T.
Oh, it's now S.
S, yeah. A through S, I apologize. It's A through S.
Mrs. Downey.
All second. And just, and refer to your blue sheet. It's been corrected. Mrs. DeSenza, do you have your blue sheet?
Yes, I have.
Okay. So it's A through S, page 92.
Yes.
Did anybody second it?
All second it.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. And now on page 97, support non-certificated staff personnel, A through G. Move. Second. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. And I believe Mr. Stein had to add on.
Yes. First is, I request the board to adopt the motion, move to return student number 2780 to the regular education program at Lacy Township High School for the 2015-2016 school year.
Move. Second. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
And the second is, a motion, move to appoint Robert Doherty as principal of the Milpon Elementary School effective August 1, 2015, at a salary to be determined.
Move. Second. With honor. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Are there any other motions before the board? Seeing none, I request a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Who's second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes share the motion. Thank you for coming out on a summer evening.